Off the meeting and then. Sorry, I'll just go ahead and kick off the meeting and then Barbara will just ask you to turn the recording off until 6:30 and then I'll be here when you get back. Um, and actually. Sorry, I'm thinking out loud because. I think you're gonna have to end the Zoom meeting and join back at 6:30.
We can just pause it, Tim, Jennifer, and I can all leave the room, just pause the.
Yeah, but we've got folks here that aren't on the council on the Zoom meeting. Um. Why don't we just do this? Let's, if we could, just go ahead and end the Zoom meeting altogether. And then I'll let Jack, if you can kick off the meeting and get the motions and stuff for executive session. And then just everybody rejoin on the owl at 6:30.
But if I end the meeting, let me start the same meeting.
Can we pause it?
No. I know that I'm making this difficult.
Hey, let's do this easy, let's do this easy way because I'm getting ahead of it. Let's start the executive session, let's all of us walk up to Tim's office, the four or five of us, we'll do the executive session, then come back down here.
Love it, let's do that, John. Alright, so let's. I don't, I don't feel like I'm gonna be able to be able to participate in this meeting, like, I cannot understand what anybody is saying. It's so, so ugly.
Alright, we'll just take, we'll do it, Jack. Okay.
Yeah, Jack, go ahead.
We can be in the council meeting. Six eighteen, and we have. So, John James, Justice State Department, present. Town manager, Tim Pellet, Jennifer Geno, Assistant Town Manager, Financial Director, Bob, that sounds good, present. We have a motion to, move to executive session, oh wait.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great.
Here, I hope we go to executive session on the one MSRA, section four oh five, uh, six eight. Potential number for the, uh, zone, so we go, I'm angry. Okay, um, all in favor of motion to, uh, move to executive session for, uh, can you say hi?
Hi.
The, uh, in the A's, on the A's, the motion passes four zero, and, uh, valid is here by its own, but, uh, is understanding right. So, we're gonna have a junior, our, so, uh, second on it.
Can you help us?
Okay, we have a motion come out of the executive session by John James.
Second.
Second by, uh, Justice Seater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's true, the motion passes four zero. Okay, and if we are the executive session, uh, six thirty seven. Okay, approval of following minutes, town council, June forty, two thousand twenty two.
Chair, I have, uh, I move to adopt the council meeting June fourth, twenty twenty two, with some additions I had in the text message that I sent about.
Okay, what do you, what do you have?
Uh, it's just citizens' comments on a couple of things that were missed because there was no recording. About the public request for the comprehensive plan to be recorded and broadcast by our news. Owned by Abby Sherwood. And thanking SPD and the LPP for participation in Marshall's special effects. Talking about Tim doing a fabulous job. In twenty twenty one, that's for safety.
Okay. Dear President, Barbara.
Oh, I'm asking, you just said the twenty twenty one, that's a.
Uh, sorry. And my eyes were squaky. Scratch that one, move it back to it.
So, a motion by John James to, uh, accept the town council minutes of June sixth, two thousand fourteen, as amended.
Jim, what's that?
For the sixth. Two fourteen, two thousand twenty two. Thank you. Do the second. And, uh, any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of, uh, approval of the June fourteen, two thousand twenty two amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we oppose, we oppose, that motion passes four zero. Signing of the treasurer's warrants. There's a warrant in front of us, uh, dated June twenty third, two thousand twenty two, in the amount of one hundred thirty seven thousand, six hundred ninety six dollars and twenty one cents.
Chair, we signed the treasurer's warrant dated six thirty three, twenty twenty two, in the amount of one hundred thirty seven. Thousand six hundred ninety six dollars and twenty one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of signing the warrant, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any pros, uh, opposed, the motion passes four zero. Report to correspondence, uh, very, anything tonight? Our public comment, does any member of the public that wishes to speak any lines of knowledge of? Zoom in, world.
Hi.
Abigail Sherwood.
Hey, hey there, um, and just something that was missed as well from the last meeting, I guess, because the recording didn't work, but Pat Robertson, um, made a comment just praising Tim. The town manager on his six months, his successful six months and professionalism at the last meeting.
Everybody else? Okay, thank you.
Town manager's report, Mr. Chair, could I make a motion that prior to Tim doing that, we move up a little bit this once, so we can tie up the fire card?
Uh, that requires a motion to the motion.
Yes, sir.
Is it a second to the motion to move up new business, number one, two, where?
Uh, prior to the town manager's report, if that's okay with them and, that's all.
Second.
The second. Let's, John James. Seater, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so we move to business number one, confirmation of fire chief, fire one appointment, there's no supporting documents for this particular right. Jim?
Uh, Mr. White, share, thank you. Glad you know, um, earlier this spring, we received full notice from current chief of the department and current fire wouldn't. Joe Russell, that after four years, four and a half years, almost five years as chief, he's retired, uh, twenty three years ago to post an officer and moving on. So, we initiated a search committee and came up with a job requirement, posted it in the house of request of the, the patent, as well as following town code charter. We had four candidates from in-house and one who retired, decided to allow go through the process. Uh, we then put together an oral panel board to interview the candidates. Prior to the oral panel board, each of the five candidates were given, uh, two essay questions that they had to answer. Both had one essay question, which discussed a long-term range plan for the fire pattern, the challenges, the concepts, how we solve those problems. The second one was a staffing issue, um, the staffing agent line of fire service is down almost thirty percent and though it hasn't been addressed, it hasn't really affected itself where we're yet. Potential comes that it could, um, the change in leadership, they're going to be losing all those eight years of experience and just two folks along the way from walking out the blue. It's retiring, um, so with that said, we assembled a committee of ten people, um, there were, uh, standing was a state fire instructor, a Midway fire chief. Another, another firefighter, uh, town, town council member, Jess, served on it, a citizen, um, some administration staff and some other, and each came up with four questions for total forty questions. Um, and we entertained the first round, when each candidate was given the opportunity to present to the oral board. Uh, at the end of that presentation, the oral board, we scored everybody equally across the board, rated them one to five, and the oral board committee, um, kept the top two candidates based on score. To move on to the next part of the interview, the next part of the interview, a few weeks later, where they came back, myself again, another fire instructor and another fire chief officer. Uh, and they, the two final candidates had presented five-year actual master plan for fire department, including personnel budget, um, equipment, operations, uh. The whole bummer, and they had quite a lot of minutes to show it to us and present it to us. Or became remarkable is when they presented those two aspects, they each came in different, at different times, how remarkable their, their presentations were, ideally close. They just had pieces of it in, in a different order, but they did the same things right across the board. So, with that said, we considered all the points and the scores for the oral, for the essay questions, the oral board, and the final management leadership interview with myself and the other candidates. Two of our candidates were, uh, Lieutenant Nick Hamel and Captain Ray Yell. At that particular point, we considered them equally, um, that we wanted to see, and we had an sounding recommendation from the panel that in either position, either one of these two, one being chief, the other one being assistant chief. That this would be an exceptionally functioning team to lead the fire department for the next decade. So, up till yesterday, I really had made a decision, and I conferred with the assistant town manager, we had a lot of talks and thoughts about it, um, and. Uh, yesterday, today, I announced that I took Nick Hamel, uh, full position fire chief. Nick's been in the path of twenty-two years. He's done a remarkable job, um, he has a great vision to move the path forward, and I think he'll do a great job, this is, if your group is done, we can waste about. With that being said, I also want to comment that, uh, Ray Yell, who was right there behind him, the Ray, the new, you know, spectacularly, had tremendous model. Knowledge and expertise to offer, and both of these two guys will fill a great void, it's being left by current chief Joe Russell and his assistant chief, Mark Lee, who retired and moved. And I want to give kudos to them, they took the reins from Chief Gorman at the time, and they have built a very strong, good foundation for them to continue on, and I believe they will. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Sayre, if you could weigh in a little bit about the process and what she, uh, she saw and what she did in the process.
Uh, before the candidates appeared, we also did, um, questions that were tipped online so that they could be compiled. And, um, the day of the interviews, it was very seamless as far as administration goes, we were very, like, blown away by, by, um. The, the questions themselves are all asked in the same order, it was very clear and very transparent as far as, like, our waiting process and, uh, kind of requirements. Um, I think that after hearing the outside forty-five minute interview after the fact, it's very intensive, so that's about at least almost two hours of interview time and share, so.
So, uh, Councilor Sayre, I want to ask a hypothetical, is there any way with the process we use that one particular person could sway this score in any one particular direction for one candidate? Yeah, not at all possible.
Not at all.
So, in any, in any particular case, this was a group effort, so Nick and Ray earned their spots getting to the top by, it's a totality of, of the group. Not one individual of score and higher, although Roy was treated equally, fairly, asked the same exact question, given the same exact amount of time. So, I want to just make that perfectly clear, with that said, uh, I'm asking the board to confirm. Yeah. His appointment will become effective on July twenty ninth at noon time on the presentation of Chief Yell. On July eleventh at six, six to six thirty. Uh, six. At six, there'll be a pending ceremony at the fire station, where they'll get sworn in by fire. To get in, and they're going to take the fact that, that, until then, they'll enter and work with Joe, uh, and I think it has enough, of course, on seats, if we're done with him, but. Um, so I'm asking the council first, if you have any questions, would be on the process, and then if not, I'm asking the council, please confirm. Please confirm Nick is sub-ord, next, our chief. Mr. Chair, anybody get questions? Mr. Chair, I move that we confirm Lieutenant Nick Hamel to the position of sub-ord fire chief, uh, due to take place on seven twenty nine, twelve P M. One second.
Motion second to confirm the appointment. Nick Hamel, John James, second by Jeff Manheim, any discussion of motion? It's sad that we have the, the recommendation of town manager to appoint, manager of points, we confirm, and, uh, we wish you, uh, a successful career.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion to confirm, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that what you can? Very good. Congratulations, chief.
So, with that said, I'd like to thank both for any, and, and going through the process, and the other candidates as well. Um, again, and I'll give you a great job, chief, if anything you'd like to ask, help out. I'd just like to thank, uh, the manager and the council for this opportunity, it, uh, it was definitely a process, but I think in the end, it'd be a lot better off for it for, uh, you know, being thorough and, and having a thorough process for that. Also, I'd like to, uh, formally announce that Ray Yell will be my assistant chief, uh, you know, we finished basically one, two, we were, seemed like we were in each other's heads, we were moving each other's stuff, and I think they'll be a perfect partner to, uh, attack this new opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Again, I think it's gonna be a great team. It's looking forward to getting to our stage for a while, we want to work, you guys look like you fit well together. Ready to go to work. Yep, it's awesome to do it.
Thank you very much, and, uh, we'll get started in a minute, thank you very much, chief.
So, here. Yes, sir, congratulations, and he's ready. Yeah, it's been going on there. I know, I just figured if we kept it here until then, it'd be fire hall. And almost didn't, because I hadn't met at one time, uh, me and me and, I think I almost didn't get to run around.
The Leach family got the spirit of America, boy, we get, uh, it's not we, last year, and we just got done with the spirit of America, boy, and Shani. It's dirty, so, yeah, the whole act of the world will have to be. Anyway, uh, that's great, and, uh, so.
Good choice.
I have another team member, uh, on board, that's great, okay, so, we'll move from there to the town manager's report.
Uh, Mr. White, share, I remember the council, uh, the highway speed table will be completed on the Liddy Street tomorrow, so there's two speed tables made for that, that's a huge issue. Um, in my first meeting, I came here too, and you guys, you folks confirmed me, those people there talking about that, um, thanks to Jen and Jay on that, they made that come to fruition, and those will be installed, there's two of them, one on the lower end and one on the upper end. So. Um, Rattle Street's all paved, the work's being done on the beautification, end of the road now, working on the driveway for the ditched insult. Um, police department last two weeks had zero arrests, one accident, eighty-seven traffic stops. Uh, Chief Ruber, uh, I want to commend him greatly on this, uh, he has decided to pick the ball up from previous administration to get the sub-ord police department nationally accredited. Through the main law enforcement accreditation program, that's a huge piece, um, for our, any community on a couple levels. First off, for criminal investigation, the criminal complaints against the patent, it indicates that we, all our policies have been reviewed by accreditation, um. Board and have reviewed and accepted them, so we're not, we don't ask what if the policy, number one. How the, how the investigation get handled, and number two, and then number three, for both liability and work is, um, get potential reductions in insurance because we're accredited. So, all the way around, it just, it just helps us greatly, uh, there's a lot of work goes into that, Chief Ruber decided to take that on, um. He hopes to have that finished and done by December, and get the patent accredited, and so that would be phenomenal.
Be huge, yes, sir.
He's been working on this for a couple of years now, and he's really taken that on. Officer McCall was voted in immensely by a panel of high people and being interviewed at SAD thirty-five, and will become a school resource officer effective July tenth. Fulfill, uh, get up to the position as school resource officer, and he will be, uh, moving over to their office's spot, seeing him will be, will be promoted to detective side of the town effective July tenth. There'll be a pending ceremony here on July, all the way from the town hall, he will be the new detective side. So, because of the support we received from you folks going on a contract, we're able to fill our staffing level, not that we couldn't do it within a hundred and three, and that was still time. And now that we filled the time, we're able to fill that effective side. Officer McCall is at the school resource officer, criminal justice academy this week getting charged. Uh, fire department last two weeks has had fourteen calls, uh, making one of them a rare rupture from Jacko. Right?
Yeah, it was a, uh. A, a mobile camper fire.
Making it quickly, took care of it, and.
A, a lot of people there, it was great. It was a big problem with, 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 with.
Code of laws, man, said fifty minutes back, and the wooden permits, and all the homes. Um, the, how we happen, fine, has been finalized, how we had, the soon of being finalized on seven, seven. Uh, that is the, is that a. Casqueating gravel.
Well, he's doing the subdivision up there.
Call subdivision.
These industrial.
Natural subdivision, okay.
So, he's reapplying? Okay, good, uh, it's, it's my understanding that the previous subdivision rule had lapsed. No, I think that's.
It's always been a long time.
Yeah, and so, that stood to get back on the books. It's off the.
Yeah. Our relers on Front Street. Our relers on Front Street, the, the loving units were assigned to the planning board for review, uh, for a subdivision. At the library, last month, eight, nine people signed up for the summer reading program, which was, as of today, has increased to a hundred and sixty people. What's the table check out, our recent booking workshop will be in July, so that is.
He was telling us that they'll come and do a workshop about how a vote won't sink, it won't quote, but it's a better buoyancy level, and he's gonna teach that in our.
Any comments?
No, sir. Oh, I, I might come to that myself.
Okay.
I'm getting it exactly.
Yeah, I might be interested in knowing how that works.
Do computers system at the library, um, and I say computer system, it's their, it's the gasses, correct? They're, the way they track all their stuff, they're, so, uh, and we will be going to the previous training in July. Uh, recreation trucker run along with Saturday, they had a long time, it's about a hundred and forty people, but Nicky said overall, well. So, my camp's first day was today, the first field trip, um, tomorrow was the fun town. Next Wednesday, the Great War School will be the super sober event on the fire first spring in the air, so we're ready down on the kids, and they're running around with a pack of playing a fun. When they're done, they're gonna do a little bit.
I was saying, didn't, didn't I hear that Tim said we all get to go to fun time as well?
Yes, yes, for all, it won't be a lot, we'll all get to fun time.
It'll be a good day for it.
I'll buy you a chicken if you go to fun time. I'll buy the chicken.
Yeah, uh, for the seniors, seniors took a bunch of dabbing for the Bouncy Clay Trigger Show last week. And then a, I'll go to the Al, the Alge show on the twenty-sixth, to see the Alge of the week. Uh, the fourth of July launch in is tomorrow afternoon. Uh, under assessing terms, we need to work on our sale analysis, sales analysis. The G S, uh, G I S mapping from online is being prepared for the online preparations to go live. Town clerk, the office has been busy with the fabrication, correct, Father?
Yes.
Been a lot?
Quite few, actually.
Uh, tiny event for a licensing class, which is one part of many tools or certification with takes three to acquire. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
The main town city clerks association, like most of the other associations, have certain criteria, certain classes you have to take, um, other voluntary things you have to do in order to be certified. One thing they came up with this year is that you have to be sworn in in your position for a minimum of three years before you begin your initial certification.
And if you're already in the works, it doesn't grant you anything?
That.
That's not, wow. Doesn't plan here, it's like, that's the woman.
Oh, no, she'll be fine.
We all, yeah.
You don't have to be certified to be fine.
I like my.
Wow, I'm so tired.
Uh, transfer station ordered a new panel of ten candidates, that'll be most suitable for plastics. Where it's operating in plastic, we'll be putting together a new pricing for the council to review and approve in July, actually, apparently that's rounding out. Our, and we've got a couple areas that are a little low, uh, so we wanted to take a look at that, and we'll put a new, a new price, pricing in front of you for your approval. Finally.
We got the second half of our R B funds this week, um, just under four hundred thousand. Um, we are watching the budget very closely, budget versus expenses, I mean, with everybody almost weekly at this point. Um, I'm seeing late Thursday night, after Barbara closes the business office at six, uh, we and Linda will come back and say and close up all the accounting, flip the year, make sure there's nothing in progress or post everything. Uh, most will have invoices coming in for four to six weeks typically through the mid-August, and then we'll gear up, finalize everything, get ready for the audit, which will be our week in September. As of today, uh, revenue is six hundred and seventy-six thousand above, actually, amount, five hundred and seventy-three thousand of that, it's been revenue sharing. At that point in time, last year when we were joining, we weren't short, we were gonna get a little five percent, so we were determined, we, we're gonna have that, we thought that, so. I'm not that many extra days, and, uh, we are also still waiting for our second panel for the homestead exemption, so that's over a hundred thousand dollars too, we don't have to. Then, uh, for expenses, uh, we are coming in pretty close, we should be about two percent of the budget.
Um, while, while we're, we're talking about that, if I can interrupt.
Of course.
Um, the Congress Plan, uh, committee has been looking at, uh, you know, what's the cost to put out the survey? And, you know, all the mail, all the rest of stuff, and it's, uh, it's expensive. But, uh, I took a look at the town house wide supply, and also the planning consultant wide supply based on information that's sent. So, whatever it was, I think you remember, and, uh, would it be appropriate to talk about that now? It started carrying over a specific amount from those unused amounts, so we would have to go through the reapproach appropriation into two thousand twenty-three this year.
This was an expense that was not included in the vote that we approved for some of the main thing.
Correct.
Above the yard.
It's above the yard.
Okay.
And, and so, before this class is over, you're not designated, then you have to have, uh, an item that comes in force again. Uh, I don't believe it's gonna be, it's gonna rise to the amount for a certain time, maybe.
Okay.
It was nine, nine thousand, I've never ran into those, uh, but it's, it's gonna be in that, you know, five, seven thousand dollar range.
Yeah, do you have a voice up, or anything?
No, no, and, and actually, one of the things I worked with against our council comments was that we're, we're just getting organized as a committee, and so in terms of how that fumbles out, whether or not the solicitation's gonna come from the town or what's most appropriate, uh, you know, as far as, you know, getting votes back from several different potential vendors, uh, because, and only due to this long reach with the folks who do our tax, and then the Jennifer, I mean, Jesse, who had a contact. Or another contact. I, I reached out to Staples, but as soon as I found out that other people were going to kind of help, I just kind of held back, I just said, oh, there'll be another iron fire. You know, just wanted to make sure we're all going in the same direction.
Well, I, I think I can come back in the committee, as, as a committee function, and a committee maker of condition, and get it, get it, spend the money wherever, wherever you need to spend the money.
Yeah, it's just a question of who's gonna reach out and make a solicitation, uh, that's, that's the big thing, right?
That would.
It may, it makes sense to do for the town office.
I had that committee was one where, you know, just looking for places to reach out to.
Right.
That was the reactor, you know.
We don't know what's in here, we don't know what's looking, I mean, I don't have all that information of what, what you guys are looking to do. I would think it'd be someone from the committee, they want to send it here, I mean, we should certainly send it to Dawn, not on private.
Yeah, I'm just, it, it looks like a little, to me, it looks like a little bit of a shocker approach right now, and we need some, some guidance as to what is preferred in terms of making a solicitation, and then, uh, where it comes back, and then ultimately, the, 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 the source for the, the kind of, so.
Well, do you guys have a sort of finish rate or a framework, or something to give that possibility to Dawn that, that we can?
We're talking, very, and, and, uh, it's just, right now, right now, we have, is we have the survey drafted.
Okay.
And so, then, now we have to get it to someone who can print it, and someone who can mail it, and then someone who can actually apply for postage, the returning mail, right, for it. So, there's, there's, there's a bunch of parts to it, that, that's a little bit complicated.
I think once they, the Congress, they would now do, and authorize the details. So, once you guys get the quote, and you choose better, just get an invoice, send that to Jen, and we'll figure out where to get those who pay it, take care of that. But, that, maybe, but it's not with, that's really up to you guys to pick the truth, the budget, or, yeah.
I have a good reason why this is our share, as far as, of what our, what our approach should be, because they're, they're just paying for us, they're not actually doing the outreach, they don't know how many specials the survey is, and what we're not trying to discuss with the committee.
Right.
As far as return, students.
Right, so we're kind of, so once you get the information together, just call, let's say, if we chose Staples, right, that's it. And here, send it to Jen, we'll send it to Deloff, and they'll, whatever you order, we'll know. So, it's really a committee's function, I think, to do that, you're operating under the committee of the office of the town council direction to accomplish your goal, so you're doing that. And that budget, so much of that money, this is an approved project of comprehensive plan, so you all have spoken to develop the project, put it out, get the prices to the price you want, and then pick that one, and then send it to us. And if, if you're operating within the scope of the duties assigned by the town house, you're fine, what you want.
In, in C I P, right now, there's just over fifteen thousand dollars, plus we're adding forty thousand dollars to the next fiscal year, so there's fifty-three thousand dollars available.
Yeah, what are we committed to something? Sorry for jumping this far. Play a little power card for the first. Hey, we're a little blasted.
There's a place holding twenty-two thousand seven in March. Yeah, we increased it because the price was higher.
Twenty-two dollars in that box?
I, I thought that it, it's like twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's how I'm right.
That's right, my, my fucking memory says that.
Jack, usually I can find your questions right on the spot, but you can't seem to.
Well, I can already tell you, Tom, right? I am, so again.
And then you put in extra, we increased it over there, because we need to do an aptitude phase two, because that was just like, or phase one, or phase two, and we didn't have a safety and phase four.
Yeah.
So, that sounds right.
Yeah, because the other, the other, uh, applicants had huge numbers.
Correct.
Uh, perhaps a thousand, so, so, state, so. So, I guess, do I even need to, if, if we want to drop this by, by July fifteenth, we need, we need another meeting, or at least. Well, get, get a final draft to, uh, at least get a final draft to the chair, and then get a final draft out to the, whoever, the, who's Jen, thank for, for recommending that, for, and we'll get it out to them, we'll get it out to, maybe, when you contact it, and then, maybe, Florida's, and just get, get pricing back.
I'm happy to re-judge the one that they have provided to us, um.
Yeah.
We can take this one line, but I'm, I'm happy to re-judge and say exactly what I said to the other people who came forward, this is more, more.
Okay.
Tell us how much this is going to cost.
Okay. Okay, let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank, thank, it, it just, it really helps to clarify, but I wanted to do it this form, no, what we had to do. Any old, any stuff, like I said, initial stuff, figure what you want, send out your specs, get your spec, that is your cross factor. Decide, choose as a committee to be conducting authorized work by the town council, and then just bill the hospital pay. And then, but, but just use the town's address and everything, have it delivered to the town.
We'll, we'll bring to attention to, to Dawn for.
Yep, yep, and now we're there, if there's any waddling wires in the system, and so, it's all the town office computer.
I just want, I just want a clean draft.
Yes. That's it.
Sorry, just.
Oh, sorry. That was it, that I identified, so you want to board that?
Yeah, and, and again, I just want to compliment, and, you know, Dawn, uh, Jen, uh, Doug, you know, kind of those stuff. Jen, for, for working on the budget, or how to work, balancing the budget, you know, with the budget, so the public hears, knows. We strive not to over-budget, obviously, and we strive not to over-budget too much, because if we over-budget too much, then the public ends up saying, well, yeah, so. So, it's really a craft from each year, if we try to budget, because we're always budgeting sixty months in advance, trying to get it figured out. And we like to come in, they, they say, you know, the optimum is eventually gonna go over one percent over, or five percent over, so we're right in that range, I, that, that's a good place for us to be, um, with the optimum of two percent.
As of July first, we are market value for diesel, right, now, uh, at seven.
So, you.
The diesel price?
Six.
Right now, already a dollar ninety-seven until July first.
That was, that was market value, where does that go, sir? They did not, they did not get the contract, uh, it's not us, it's the, the school.
This, this school on the town of Elliot, uh, gradually decided that we should wait, and that was back in March, and then only, then we put the war, and it's just only happened since then. So, that'll be a little bit, that'll be the new start in July and going forward, so, I'm not.
Yeah. Good. I guess we had, we had a water meeting with Water and Storm Patents the other day. Uh, Rusty, the update, Rusty Committee is signing on July seventeenth to the twentieth. They're hoping to do a community dinner, uh, over here at the, um.
Central School.
Yeah, the central school, thank you. Uh, they're hoping to, they need volunteers to set up the cleanup, provide drills and cooks, and advertise itself a lot. Uh, this will be on Saturday, uh, the year, from Saturday, July sixteen to Tuesday, July nineteen. Which I would just schedule for Sunday, I believe, uh, at the school. Yeah, they, status five, we sat at five-thirty, they have six speakers. Uh, they'd be welcome, they'd ask, they'd ask, they'd ask Valerie if she would speak, and welcome everybody, um, organize the purpose and monitor people who are doing that. Um, explain the mission, talk about the K E and open this government experience, um.
Jeff, conclusion to be that, Dave?
The, I believe, the dinner is planned for Sunday. The, whatever, Sunday, the seventeenth would be the dinner. Maybe, Sunday late afternoon, that'll be all the entire, the, the event, they will also buy community tripers on the town suburb. So, I, we would certainly be asking, then on Monday night, they're talking about coming here, using this room to do a community roundup, because the owl, and the people could zoom in from Rusty, so, I'd certainly like to have you folks present, we're hoping to do a little presentation tomorrow evening. Something to show our, our support of the program. Um, we made an agreement on a foreclosure on this particular one, we've had to set up a payment plan, and we have our two final foreclosures. Hope we'll solve them shortly. We met with the playground manager, we get closer to the playground here, uh, for Cummings Mills, and had a lot of lid to get some ideas. Had numerous complaints about, uh, our cars and Paul Street being left there for extended periods of time, police have dealt with that. Franny on the mountain head, regarding on job injuries, uh, we know that, we've had several on jobs recently. We had some staff members that beat trouble, and had to be taken away by animals, we had to make sure that the administrative staff knew how to handle that, what to do with it. Um, Dawn reports the website is now on page three, making good progress, we are, we are excited about the change we're seeing. New staff code and planning, uh, new staff code and planning will start next week, have the work control for a couple weeks to get up to speed, and then they'll be jumping on. Hopefully, we'll have got it solved in room next week, this basic stuff like they have upstairs, dead for sound, and I canceled, Jen's vacation, she's supposed to be on vacation next week, she can't come yet.
That's worse way here, though.
Yeah, that's right. That's all I have, just a little here.
They want to consider some walkover, too.
Yeah, something, I, I do have one more thing, I received a complaint, actually, please do receive the complaint. Uh, it's an issue that has to do with traffic on Main Street, uh, reviews from Mark Bennett. Bed Avenue Chief, he's replying to the police chief, Bed Avenue Chief, I have a news I'd like to share with you, hoping to drive it driving on Wood Street to Main Street. Well, trying to make a left or right into it, and on the Main Street is very difficult, dangerous, as there is on-street parking on both post office side, left turn, and the church street side, right turn. They have large trucks entering these paths, they most of the time, it's impossible to steer around any vehicles, safely fall, make a turn, especially during the morning and afternoon work hours. A few years ago, to Illinois, we're going to remove some spaces on the post office side, and that helped, the both sides should have at least three more spaces taken out. Right now, you have a lot of the main street blind, and hope for the best, unacceptable at all, we have lots of thousands of account cards, we have a hundred and a thirty-one with a Class A motorhome, so we cover a lot of the incoming traffic, and we're pulling out. An increased danger being, yeah, I go to full-on street, when that doesn't work, can you look into this, let me know if there's anything that needs to be discussed at the same time. She said even pass on to myself and those enforcement, and okay, so, we've already, um, we already taken away one parking spot on the post office side, but just to let you know that that's a problem, that's okay. I did talk to police chief and fire chief, and they conferred with this, they said there was a traffic problem there, the, this is packing there, the way that people are packing, the big trucks. Pick up our packs there, and you're in this small pack, and you can't steal the second car, see one or any of them. So, I think for tonight, but at some particular point, I'll bring this, I'll revisit this that view of roles. We gotta go over the next couple, we'll take a look at it, if the exact idea or thoughts are. So, any other comments?
Well, just as a general comment. One complaint doesn't ever exist, I think, in my view, uh, and so I think we just have to be careful to, you know, call up all the reinforcements and all the troops, because we get a lot of it. I think it's, it's good that we investigate, like I said, it's, it's a, you know, in my time here, we've operated on trying to do the best and most, and I use that corner a lot, and, uh, and if I can get to my one, but oftentimes we would make a right on Main Street, and then make a left on button, because either they're not making a left-hand turn to track at control of right, and turn at control of left, and so, uh, again, but that's only one thought, I'm not trying to disparage the, the person or anything like that, but, uh.
I'm just reporting on to me and not.
Right, so that's, it's, you know, you know, we're just switches. But you, you do due diligence, that's fair.
I'm just reporting to the council, so you're aware, um, this, we did have somebody who did it at the post office.
In the, uh, the crosswalk?
That's all I have on the mic. So we have, before we get rid of that, we have a little bigger compact parking spot, instead of the escape area. The easiest way, we don't wanna lose any more parking spots, so we are, we don't have on Main Street, so we made it a compact parking spot, might eliminate that problem.
There's some comments about the, uh, crosswalks themselves, that a lot of the markers are already damaged, or I felt that one of the post office is making the call, so. And we want to take your love and right.
Probably should have been some big car. That's good, that's true. Yeah, right, if they're, uh, they're doing their job.
But the post office, the, the, yeah, they have the flashing lights there, so. They got whack, flashing lights going, and someone was looking at their phone. I don't, I don't know.
Who says it aside, there was a statistic, and this is, it could be heard admitted, I think I can't hold the source, but in doing traffic work in my day job, I heard a statistic many years ago, that there are actually more incidents in marked intersections than unmarked intersections. Because there's this, uh, feeling of security, that when you walk out, and you're between the lines, that you're somehow safe, and, uh, you know, there's really no reason that those lines need someone to stop. So there is that, that, we can't ignore the fact, simply press a button, step up, doesn't work that way, I mean, particularly like this one over here. Press the button, walk, you know, so there's that kind of things goes on, but that, that post office, uh, I know that one personal friend was, was hit that one as well.
It's a good time. That's one.
So that's well, uh, so again, you have to just be really, really careful. All I have, and we're not entering for. Okay, we'll go on to the first item under unfinished business, is there any members of the public who should make a comment? I need to help hold on these two things together, medical marijuana care, you have a licensing of medical marijuana care, you have a home administration, pharmacy standards, and not saying anything for the public. Okay, um, I have a general comment on these, uh, documents, uh, and that is, it I, I believe that at some point the text needs to be looked at from a point of view of clarification and the format for clarification, uh, like, for example, the first page, under performance standards and local licensing requirements, and definitions, you just said definitions, which I assume wants to be in one forty-sixty-seven dot three, but really, if we're going to include the definitions, you could refer to one forty-nine dash nine, which is how it's only going to be constructed, where the definitions go. And, and so there's, there's things like that, and then there's just simple things like that. Like, if you look at one forty-nine dash nine, the topics for every term is defined. It's just no bold, straight caps, all the way across, and no numbering of, uh, italicization or anything like that, so, um, and then there's just the, you know, the sections and subsections and paragraph format. I think we need to look at that, and have someone look at that, to bring it into the form of the items. Uh, and I don't know who that would be, so.
We need a workshop on this, because there's stuff down here that I absolutely disagree with. I, I could be the example, if no license, shall be granted. Uh, my license authority to the police chief, fire chief, health officer, code of ortho officer, all made positive recognitions regarding, we have a responsibility to comply with disorderment, or any other applicable town ordinance, or state, federal law, of course, by such or such official. What other pretty business will we do that to in this town? There's a whole bunch of them in here, and whether you're pro or non, I'm not saying one out of this legal in any business, that they have to jump through all these hoops, because I can open a sub shop at my house, and I don't have to have all those people there. And it's the same thing, selling a leader in product. I got, I don't need examples from reading this and going through, that we're gonna have to work on jackass. I don't think, if we said that to a lawyer.
I'm not a lawyer.
Completely, I, I, I don't think so, if I can pull those out, that's why, I mean, I just don't see how we can do this on a motivation, make a step, legal go ahead. It's a caregiver, right? It's not recreational, it's not, it's a medical caregiver, and we're gonna have them jump through all these hoops, and.
Yeah, I thought we had kind of gave the, I'm sorry, I thought we needed this to more like what the board does as far as like signage, and sort of what, and so on and so forth, but I do see things that have definitely changed from when we, from when we last started, and so I was just wondering, like, have they made all those changes, or have they gone?
And basically, I, I, I don't know, it's the, the public here, for all the neighbors to show up. Again, if we do that, if someone opens, let's not shop. We do some, but there's just a bunch of stuff in here that I, I, uh, I don't see how.
Well, do you have a fairly suggested date for a, a workshop?
I think for us, or I think for us to go over this line for line, and sit here and, yeah, go over what we all have. Again, I am not pro or for either way, it doesn't matter to me, but I just don't see, you know, the license franchise should have a lot of the doors and windows, and show me certain line of answers. Okay. Uh, that's under admin. And then admin A, provisions to prevent loitering on the premises.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I don't mind, I believe we've not speak on these issues, but in front of the appeals section, we give, refers to town clerk lying in application, um, town clerk renting licenses for the circuits, um, that's not a town clerk's fault.
All right, well, the other side, now, the other side, Art, is we're doing this every year, you honestly don't have time. With thirty-five plus caregivers that we have around that we know of, there could be sixty, which we don't know. I don't know if you have that much time, free time, to review all these applicants and get them to.
Town clerk should be responsible for the initial investigation, though.
Because that's what I'm saying, this was a cold read for me, I don't.
That's cold, sir, that's not.
Um, so, I would suggest August, at the break, or, or, or July.
What will we have our, what will we do, our folks in us right now, or?
They're coming on after. Well, I'll give this to her and have her put her eyes on it, but. If you could, just, again, again, I went through it today, just because I will read it back, please. I just can't do that, it's sitting in this position against the business.
I would recommend that, yeah, in the planner.
Hundred percent.
Uh, then, she might, might not have anything to, that she might go and give us some guidance on.
Yep, well, she can also give you liaison back to planning board, right? So, I think that's, they said, I would look at, with what we have coming up, speaking, and the rest in July, Jack, I'd say, July second?
August second.
August second, so I.
That's not roughly, that's for.
Sorry, didn't mean to put a camera on, but.
No, six, three, you know, on the second, uh. Anyway, we, we can work ahead, uh, on the text uh, with this document, or actually both documents, both the, uh, uh, the home occupation piece, and the, uh, the local licensing requirements and performance standards. It was under one forty-four, one forty dash forty-three, and it was one forty-sixty-seven point three. So, we can move ahead of those, but just my instinct tells me that this is, they're repeated, it's not in the form of how those on the arguments lays out, it's outlined.
Yeah, that's easy, yes.
And, and so we need to get that fixed, and, uh, but the other piece on this is that it's, it might be somewhat confusing. So with the header, uh, we have a date of October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, for the revision of the number nine of two thousand twenty-one, of licensing requirements and performance standards. So I, I would move to, uh, enter into the, the council record, receive the draft, inform the standards, and local licensing requirements, medical marijuana registration care, but dated today, six twenty-eight, uh, as of this draft. And, uh, do the same thing, that's dated six hundred and sixty-six. And then, uh, the other thing will be to enter into the council record, receive the draft, propose zero ordinance amendment, check on my file, section one forty-six forty-three, home occupation slash medical marijuana registration care, with home occupation, so. And that way there, we'll be able to date the document, in whatever form it is, what's on the table, what's on the table. I don't care if the other piece would be on the, or not. Uh, and it's, I believe, too soon to send to the attorney, uh, because we need to.
We need a workshop.
Yeah, we can get it twice, if you can workshop it out, and we'll clear all the law on that, what we sent and spent the money. So, and enough money on the way to the shit.
Yeah, so it's like, a lot of, I could be wrong, but it looks like some of this stuff is based, I'm wondering, I think that.
Yeah, it's oftentimes the matches, the draft, the draft from something.
So, uh, let me get, let me get from Michael, so we'll, we'll lean in, and, and on this, and this will give enough time, I have more stuff, I guess, I want to have to put some stuff together. Maybe make some recommendations back there, at least.
You know, just have, have her take a look at the code, and what's on the books, it's actually in the code, I think, there's some very issue between sections and sections, of the outline format, there's no, like, capital A, small a, open brackets, all that whole of the, uh, of things. So if there's nothing more on that, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll set this aside, and so, uh.
If you set a date for.
Yeah, we're, we're two workshops for the beyond.
You need to do that, and we'll, 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 please, set that.
And, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, we set the, uh, council workshop on August second at six thirty P M, to do the draft performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical caregivers, medical registration.
Both, both items, one and two, under, uh.
Second.
Any special motion for the workshop? Hearing none, all the public in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, the opposed, that was a four zero. Okay, we'll move on to the two thousand ten traffic study discussion. Cliff, did you hear anything on that? Okay, any members of the public who's zooming in, and they're ready, topics for, uh, two thousand ten traffic study. Okay, at the council, uh, we we got our documentation, we're, being the sound staff, and, uh, so this is the two thousand ten, it's, uh, it also references previous, uh, studies that were done over two years, but notably the, uh, uh, nineteen eighty-six, uh, out of hospital, land use study, by T Y L, the medical association, it's nineteen ninety, you're treating sufferer bypass study, nineteen ninety, parking study, and then it goes on, 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 up through, uh, two thousand eight, there's eighteen separate references to various studies, uh, and then that's two thousand eight, room two thirty-six, parter study. And, uh, so it's, it's a very important historical document, and, uh, and also, it's, it's really kind of, uh, informative as to, you know, verifying where we have our various issues, most notably at the corner of uh, Main Street and Portland Street, and also Main Street slash room four and two thirty-six, by the Baptist Church. And, uh, and then there's in between, for those of the most notable spots, uh, it's also calls out the intersection of Academy Street and Main Street across about the donuts. And, uh, so on that one there, it was a very interesting piece that they made a suggestion, so we put an island in there, uh, which would help, uh, egressing traffic, conduct the donuts from making a left-hand turn, it says no left turn, but there's people.
In human law.
Law, and also, they mentioned the, uh, a refuge island, as part of that, so that the, uh, the folks crossing at Federated Church, just down the hill, so to speak, or closest to two thirty-six, couple of farms, would have not as long a walk, uh, you know, crossing the road, as required with them, so there's, there's lots of good things in here, and, uh, so I, I, I appreciate the fact that we've got a call back on this, and, but I think where I would start with some other techniques, would be to break out from their feet, to simply begin, unless there's been a recent traffic count by Main H O T, but have them, uh, and, uh, and just revise traffic laws. Uh, because, you know, we have the historical data here, you know, with the thousands of cars a day, I can't put my hand on it right now, exactly what that was, but there's there's several good years of how many cars, forty thousand cars, seventy thousand cars traversing that town every day, and, uh, and so, that might be a good place to start this.
In the, Mr. Vice Chair, I, in my page four, the proposal, it breaks it off as half one thousand two uh, six thousand dollars for the data collecting background information, so we can break it out.
My intuition, I've, I've, I've looked at many of these, I'm running previous studies, uh, I was on the planning board, we did the out of hospital lady study, and then that recommended the bypass, um, actually, I wasn't familiar with, uh, with the, the D R T proposed bypass, which were in the old train track, which would have been right from. Which would have been right from. Where ninety-one comes into our highway two thirty-six, just heads right out, crosses the, basically falls to gasoline. And then joins way up, uh, north of five and back roads, it was not broken and, uh, that was a. I, I was aware of it, uh, but that, that would have been the jewel right there, if I asked me. But I think people were scared by, you know, the eight, eighteen million dollars, whatever the price tag was in that, but. Anyway, I, I think the conclusions repeat themselves over and over and over again. Uh, but it also recognizes the fact that this is very much multiple-headed in terms of how we swallow this. We, we can do two out of five, they can do three out of five, but. Getting five out of five has proved to be unattainable for years. You know, when we did the, the power of still land use study, had that bypass. Actually, that's why the road fund games were built so wide, that was going to be the answer, built by a jury. But that didn't go because they're killed basically by comments by the water district because of, uh, potential runoff from roadway. In a well-handened texture. And also the whole history board, I didn't know about this, but the comments I wrote at Academy said, well, you're going to be cutting into our land in such a supply. So you'd have a corner of the land unacceptable because of the road. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I, I, I'd like to just, you know, do another thing, I'd say, yeah, a little bit here. Uh, thank you very much for pulling it up because it was, it was kind of a re.
Uh, we're going to do a check, so maybe you want to do it now or you want to do it so Kevin will go back to school?
Maybe we can start it in September, do that.
I mean, that's, that's where I go. Because central school has a lot, nobody else's kid ride buses anymore or lines.
It was September, you were right.
Right, they would be getting a study and have it back to us until January.
Yeah, they'll have the, I don't know if they use, uh, the road description for them, I, I think they might need some other kind of thing to use. But, uh, that has to be on the road, wherever they find cars, uh, for extended periods, actually.
I advise, I don't need you to probably say someone who's like, they have drug names now, but with a quicker call.
Call, deal it, call. If you don't pay me, I will sit the chair and go quick, quick, go ahead. Sure, uh, will join me?
Uh, I think more than a problem, I guess, oh. The traffic study, when you monitor traffic coming in, I think everyone that's in this group knows what the grand stuff is. It's going to be tremendous, because of spending taxpayer dollars on that. If you think you got a solution, go in the solution way, never mind spending money on, how many people come in, we know this already, not us. Unfortunately.
Another place, any interest? I, and then that is a, a meeting that's coming up on, what, the fourteenth of July?
Yeah.
Uh, with main D O T. Yeah, they're coming down here with best fit and Dr. Bell's what we're going to do with the roads here and, uh, so. Um, I've been against their compact piece, but perhaps maybe Jack pulls in his horns a little bit. And says, okay, if we can get control of the roads, does that mean we could actually put out some pump ups? Typically pump ups have crosswalks that have an inclining factor, it's a bit across the road, or also, you know, slows people down. And, you know, again, I see the eye roll, but it's, it's, uh, you know, there, there might be a benefit taking control of those roadblocks. Uh, I'm just, I, I haven't talked to Tim about this, but just off the top of my head, I need to see the price.
What is a bump up?
It's where you, uh, basically put a half an eye. Not a whole eye, which take a half an eye, like, or split it in half, one half on one side of the road. Rather than the straight curvings, you simply have to the end of the park or saw. That's what that would end and, uh, that's, that's the form of recognition in here.
It's an optical illusion, it makes you slow down in actual memory. It makes the road appear smaller than it actually is.
Yeah, and actually, that's, that's why street trees are not just nasty buildings. But when you put a tree that frames the road going down, people. So you have that illusion that's narrow. If you have like a little street right now.
I wouldn't, uh, no, I, I think there's good, uh, I think. I think it's nice to try and save money, but I, I, my concern is, um, we are not traffic experts, where we all know there's a problem. And we've been at least ten years, we still have to solve it on our own. Um, I think we need to definitely get the, the experts in here for our pedestrian safety, for our traffic safety. Get the real data, we all know it's going to be large numbers, and I agree. But experts don't work off how much traffic along. They can, they can work off of what we have and project in the future, which we're not even talking about at this point. We're talking about right here, right in front of our noses, and I think that's where we, at risk of offending, failed, so that's all. And I think that having, um, the experts come in and, uh, give us a really good plan with real data is honestly their responsibility.
If I, if I can drop one, follow Jeff's point, uh. In, in my own idea of state traffic engineers, we have six generations, maybe eight generations of engineers that are experts in moving vehicles from point A and point B. Uh, engineering community is only now getting up to speed to say that there's other types of people who use the roads. And so we have, one of our big problems is that every designer so far has been to efficiently move cars. And that's where you end up with speed, because they want to move here when they're going to be. And so I think whatever solution we arrive at, it has to be multiple, it has to consider the livability of the area. I mean, look at, look at where we are right now, we have main highways going to town. And Sam, I think you verified this, that what does the main D O T do for our sidewalks? Zero. They just don't design around pedestrians, they'll accommodate pedestrians, but only minimal, they really focus on things with windshields, road tires. And, uh, and it's a, it's, it's criticism, I work in the business, but it's, it's, uh, but I think we have to get that part of it as well, get that part of it right, because there are, it's, it's not only multiple, it's multiple this one. Right, to make, make it down the town to that building.
Hey, um, everyone, this is Mallory, I'm trying to follow as much as I can. It's sort of like Charlie Brown on my end, but I know you're talking about the traffic stuff. I want to jump in and just say that I agree with Jeff, I think that this is something that we should, we should try to do. Um, and then forgive me if this was mentioned already, but can we fund this, we're using TIF funds?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say that.
Okay.
The jet, the jet project, it's already set aside, already allocated, so that, that money is under for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Abby's got her hand up.
Do you, do you want to say?
Oh, I'm, I'm just going to add that, and now we're going to come to.
This is okay, we've got a comment on this, but it's okay with the word, I'm amazed.
You guys have your hand up.
Okay, so, um, I, I am in support of this proposal. I know that the point ten study had really good impact to central school. And in that traffic situation, I'm driving to central school every morning and trying to get better reports. And I understand the traffic problems going to get horsebending to accommodate for the changes that hospitals have as far as, um, while everybody's concerned with the best of housing. I think that this, this is the time, when you look at the timeline, they're, they're proposing just for the public's knowledge. Um, for a report to be to us, uh, by January thirty of two thousand twenty-three. And I think that that would coincide with, um, you know, us having an economic development board later and getting a really holistic view of the traffic, the downtown, whatever we need for revitalization, so I'm in support of.
Abby, you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to encourage the council to, um, look at the time in the report that just came out last year. And it was reported out to the best of my knowledge, that was in October of two thousand twenty-one, was the, uh, ad hoc committee that was, um, not ordained, but, uh, instilled and empowered and, um, given that, um, that charge by the town council to look at our pedestrian safety downtown. What I've heard tonight and what I've heard at other meetings when this has come up is, yes, we have a two thousand ten report from D U T. But D U T was also walking our streets with the pedestrian safety committee last year, giving us, um, very concise recommendations. Many of those recommendations for the short term at least, um, I'm very pleased and impressed with Tim's implementation of some of those measures that the two thousand twenty-one ad hoc pedestrian safety committee recommended to the town council for immediate action. Um, but that really needs to be referenced. Um, I think people can tend to get frustrated if we're reinventing the wheel or we're rehashing something that's already a group of dedicated individuals who've already put in a lot of, um, time and effort with. Uh, so that would be my recommendation to keep in mind that we just freshly, less than a year ago, had a report, um, given on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
Yes. This is just a discussion, we don't hesitate that.
No, I think you recommended that we keep the ball rolling on this, we, you know, we've given the report on June fourteenth. And we have homeworks to, to, to review this and, um, staff should go ahead and get the book. And, uh, so it's a question, we'll find tomorrow. Actually, did the staff have a recommendation, uh, on moving ahead with some phase of what's recommended by consultants or?
My, I guess what I recommend is something that's been going on, so I just want to clarify, uh, Abby, you got her hand up, I don't know if she wants to speak again or not, because it came out.
Should take that.
Oh, so, um, this, this was a, this was not a D O T report, this was a separate, uh, traffic study report, um, separate from the D O T report for the two thousand, I think, eight or nine, correct?
Yeah, the D O T of two thousand eight.
Yeah, um, this was something that was apparently done in two thousand and ten, probably separate of that. And I would, uh, in conjunction with what Abby said, whatever Abby, we have the information, I think certainly getting to them to cooperate. And for their informational materials too. Uh, because that's, that's not listed, obviously, in here, it would be, it was done in two thousand twenty-one. But yet that's a bit, my recommendation would be that, you know, so that I can recommend to the council, but why does this spend tax period at all? I can't do that on saying, I, I can tell you that there's a lot of cars and traffic on roads every day. I, you, you don't want me to do that, that's not how I, you know, I would tell you that, you know, you want me to recommend that. I have to recommend go the, the full amount to get the study done in practice, so you have the pertinent information to make a decision right now. Not totally the choice of a plan, but all I'm doing is putting information in front of you to decide how you want to get it, which one of you, what you want to do. I would recommend getting information, who has already funded in the TIF, um, you know, quite a few years ago, they set money aside for this. Not going to be there, so that'd be my recommendation, Mr. Vice Chair. Your question, whatever you want to shoot. It's still on, what we got here, we're going to change this quote, and we're not going to get any more. Well, the only thing we could do is ask them to do it one second at a time. I guess if that's what you wanted us to do, we could go back and ask, you know, did you break out just to one second at a time? I don't really value that, um, but, or, you know, it would seem to me that the, you know, if, I guess I was going to do that first, I would take tax two, which is traffic and safety analysis, that's what I wanted first. Is, you know, how many people may get run over when they cross the street on the freeway? So, uh, but, but I, I don't know if they, how they do that, or if they can do it. We asked them for a quote, update this report, well, current information, so you can make a plan, decision going forward for the future. That's what we asked for, that's what we thought. And so where you're at right now is just to move up until we make the motion and act to move on this. Correct, I don't, we don't want to get in the know here about where it is. Correct, and you have, so I, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this proposal and, uh, allow the town manager to move forward with this proposal.
See enough.
Just, 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 the total amount, uh, estimated is forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Out of the tip, out of the tip, out of the tip funds.
The motion is second.
Just for clarity, it is not coming out of taxpayer raised money, it's coming out of the tip fund. So it's not coming out of anything, it's coming off top or a budget. To make sure everybody, anybody that listens understands that we're not spending money, give us earmarks for that in the first place.
Yes, I'll, I'll bring, I'll bring the, uh, the point out of vote, the push by main D O T, the town itself, heroic to in some fashion, uh, take control of some portion of the state highway, current two thousand. Urban compact, so to speak, and information like this, that's why I'm interested in the traffic counts. Will help inform us what we're buying. You know, we, we know, I found the numbers and, um, in nineteen eighty-six, tra- traffic on Portland Street, north of the village was eighty-five hundred vehicles per day. Two thousand ten, fourteen thousand. Traffic south of the village on two thirty-six was ten thousand six hundred vehicles per day in eighty-six, and today it is over fifteen thousand two hundred. And I think that at least, I think the increase in, I would, I would guess it's probably linear as it's, as it's moving out, uh, just as. So if we have that, that many, if we know how many cars we have, we know what elements we can design into the road with if we take control. Or if we in some fashion resist the overtures of main D O T. We say, okay, yeah, I won't take this, but you, you have, as a, as a, uh, state agency who's responsible for state highways, it's important that the state make these improvements. Because they fail to do so in fact, that's what I said before about just focusing on cars and trucks, you know, uh, other, other, you know, people, bicycles or anything else that's on the road. And, uh, so.
So the motion's on the table, we get the numbers.
So, well, this is a loaded book, right, so.
Jojo. That's the lick.
What? Okay, Pat, you're up, do you? Okay, so anyway, you know the comments, uh, with motion was wanting to, uh, take, uh, forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and, uh, recommend your best to the contract state. Hearing none, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, the opposed, that vote's a four zero. Okay, uh, so we'll find more authority, uh, if we can, but any members of the public who talk about solar issues? Yeah, not hearing, so I've seen, so, uh, we have no supporting documents. So we have no supporting documents on that, is there any new business to discuss at this meeting?
Yes, so I reached out to the next day coming back, we talked, I, I was gonna get to the hot schedule, but before I get to the hot schedule, first I had to go back and check to make sure there's no sense in rushing sending this back to the planning board, having any dialogue, and all of a sudden, we just added this on the moratorium. So we talked to Phil Soss, and Phil said, yes, we can add, you can do another addition of moratoriums. So before we run down to bill, we've been around, we've been able to get this done, it's kind of scheduled tight for the next summer months, and having any annual workshops. My recommendation would be, we proceed quote into how us would reach out to legal to get the language for the moratorium. So the subject of that, we said, Phil, we may not do the whole 180 days. Phil said, no problem, if you finish early, September or November, whatever, if you want to do that, when you write and you get ready to pass the, the audit, you just write to the auditors that they, they'll cancel all the moratorium at that time. So very simplified, I, I think it would be better, my recommendation to the council is that you postpone or do an addition to the moratorium to another, another extension and get that sent to staff with us tonight, we'll call Phil, get permission from you if that's what you want to do. If not, we're still on the deadlines of that, and we have to, we have to.
It's why I asked for a workshop, because if we get extended, it's a smart thing to do, because it's not done yet. If we rush it, it's gonna be half day, and we're gonna have polls, all sorts of whatever, you're doing it again, and I'm getting a lot of them, so it's extended.
I, that's, that's what I, my recommendation is, I talked to Phil, I know I talked to the planning boards, I wanted to get the people first. So I then get this out, I just had such a busy week, and I apologize, Jen, if you want to have on that. So, Phil said absolutely, he might prefer us to, to, to slow down and do a variety and not rush to fill your calendar and planning board calendar. So that's what I, that's my information, this advice here.
I, 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 thank you. Well, this is, I mean, your last one, I'm sure. I am seeing support, allowing extension for solar, so from moratorium, simply because once we have GIS tool in hand, it will make this work so much easier for our plan for the ones we have our links on board.
Okay, is, is there, I guess I'll ask unanimous consent, is, is there any objection to extending the moratorium? Okay, unanimous consent of the, of the board is to move ahead.
Well, we're all, we're all in line with Phil, and I'll get that back to you, I'll advise the planning board as you wishes. So the planning board will know that we don't have to rush on this, I'll get that for tomorrow. And that's what we'll, so at the next meeting, we'll get the language and get that passed.
Yeah, if you can get it on the next agenda, we'll just pass it on the next agenda.
That's cool, work.
Hmm?
You can go to the moratorium.
So.
I love you, Peter.
Let's.
The next meeting.
Schedule the last one, next meeting.
First meeting.
First meeting in July.
It'll be, uh, the 14th or something?
July 12th. Is that a six thirty?
Yeah, six thirty.
We would need the verbiage 10 days, seven days prior, right, oh, hearing has to be posted at seven days.
We gotta have it, we gotta have it.
We have a document prior to.
Prior to, and so, all right, so if you gotta move it to the second week, it's second meeting in July, it doesn't really matter, we got this September.
Yeah, exactly.
So you can move it to the second meeting, meeting in July, get your bill for you. Now, now, clarified, only in two weeks, just, so should, should we get the current verbiage, the lawyer give us that now? They approve that verbiage, then adopt that with public care, and then post the public care, and then we have it, is that part process? Or can we just get them to order and post it?
If they schedule a public care for whatever date, we get the language from the attorney, we can just post.
Okay, they don't have to approve one day prior?
No, because they can amend it.
Okay, all right, so we're good. We'll, I would say, have their public, post the public care for us, speaking July, we'll get language from Bill.
And if you can't, you can do that.
Yeah, no, you should build the last area out, and then I think, get that, get that.
As long as it's not kind of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so.
And that's why you don't, you know, you already got, you know, scheduled with the marijuana stuff, you did, yeah.
We did full talk.
Yeah, it's getting more and more, it's getting more and more, so that's why you can do this and push yourself to September, you know, the, well.
Make sense.
We'll do that.
So this is your motion, vote today? Just a public care, maybe?
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll.
What, what date do we have? July 12th?
Vice Chair, and we.
Yeah, we've got a public care date for July 12th for the extension of solar moratorium. Second.
You're confusing me, you just said second meeting.
Oh, that is, I was asking if that's, if they had to get, if they had to broaden the verbiage for us, you said no, so then we can have, we can just do it on the ball, we'll get the verbiage, they turn prior.
If you accept my declaration, I will be confusing you.
Well, I just have to have it posted to seven days, which means I need the language by the time they're posting, hence we're looking at my way.
Yeah, so it's still, I was going with week 11.
July 26th.
Okay.
I just know Phil, so.
I'm gonna, I'm still gonna amend it, let's just shoot for July 26th. Let's do it right again, without, we made a fourth July holiday, down on us the last. Let's go, call the motion, and John, revise the motion for six, six thirty, you do your second, so, okay, and.
Any one discussion?
I, I've got more of a market line, which is still on me.
I was in favor of having a public care to extend solar found moratorium on July 26th, six thirty PM, say aye.
Oh, yeah.
All right. You oppose, we're gonna oppose, that vote for that, since four zero. Okay. We've already signed this as number one. Point to the planning board, we have, Zach Noble. Noble. And, and what can you explain? So is there a motion, Robert, just to check, is it 2023?
Yes.
Did you hear anything? Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we appoint Mr. Zachariah Noble to the vacant planning board position that is expiring on June 30th, 2023.
Second. Okay, motion is second, is there any discussion? Are you in all of the favor of the appointment, say aye.
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 Good interview, I think it'll be a great addition to the board.
Okay, so now, I'm looking past four zero, so move on to appointments to board, oh, wait a minute, front lady. Have you heard? No, I was, I was still on Sax. Okay, so we have four and three appointments, and this is number three. So I think we can do this as a, as a group, just call the, uh, the position. And, and, and name the appointed.
So just read down the names, basically?
Yeah, just name the building committee, the names, and then service, names, exclude my control of what I would advise the board.
Okay.
And just read them out, allow.
Mr. Vice Chair, I make the motion that we re, what is it, we reaffirm an appoint to the building committee, David Stansfield and Brad Presto to the historic district commission, be Dan Boyle and Virginia Jennings to the library advisory board, Catherine Gilpress to the planning board, Greg Zinzer to the recreation committee, be Dan Boyle, and to the zoning board of appeals, Jeffrey Clark.
Just a second.
Okay, the motion by Jeff and a second by Jessica. Any discussion of motion? Are you in all of the favor of the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I oppose, we're gonna oppose, that vote for that, since four two. And I'd like to thank all the folks that are standing to be reappointed for their, for their work in the community service. Okay, Councilman Minahan has a point on certified local government and general information and discussion on how to proceed.
Yeah, I just, it was, this topic was brought up to me by one of the historic commission members, and I did some looking into it. As you saw in the email and the supporting documents, it basically is a program through the national historic preservation that's because of the National Historic Preservation Act, through the National Park Service, which then said creates a main historic preservation commission. And there are several funds that are available to communities that apply and become what they call certified local governments. So what it is, is there's a list of things that are, that you can qualify, are that are qualifying, like having a historic commission. There's just a bunch of different things, things that we're already doing as a town. And whatever, that becoming this certified local government, it's, it allows you access to federal grant money through, which is one of the, through the main historic preservation commissions, where you get the money through matching grants and things like that. And as I had mentioned, I, I felt like there was a good pairing with what we're already looking at with the, the potential tip downtown zone, where so much of our downtown is in some, has some historic value. I thought it would be a interesting way to help the tip funds go, stretch a little, a little more, as well as just be able to be beneficial for the historic value that we have in our, so I just wanted to bring it up as a, as a potential option. I don't think that there's much that we as a council have to do, it would basically be a, an application which our historic commission can do or maintain. It's essentially a sign off with by the town manager there at the end or something like that, so just as early in the, in the research, there's only 11 certified local governments in Maine with, and they get it. So there's very few trying to dip into that pool of funds, so I just wanted to bring it up to, to you guys to get an idea if there was support being moved forward to, for the app applying and things like that, so I just wanted to bring it up as a topic.
I have a question, Troy, Jeff, based on your research on this topic, is there any commitments that the town itself, borough would be required to do as a result of becoming a certified local government?
That's where a lot of the time, in the midst of doing more, because I had that same question. I don't have a firm answer on that, but from what I'm seeing, there aren't any, it's not, it wouldn't be anything over and above what we're already doing.
Jeff, good question. So is that 8,000 available for everybody, or is that 8,000 money available to town itself, or is that split between one town or two, from the wall?
That, that was just an example of what they had from last year, they had 8,000, and that is available funds for all of us, only the CLG, only the certified local governments. And so that could go towards, it would be, you would, you would submit to applications for funding, whether it be for she, the lady I told you, one of those towns was doing a study on wood guns and how they're affected in climate, like this. Stuff like that, so they, they, it's different types of studies and education, we, we heard, things like that. So it's.
Considerable for the historic.
Considerable for the historic district.
I may look on it in that, that can air. We have a historic district, it's not a whole town.
Correct.
And there's been problems in the past, when somebody wanted to put something in the historic district, and what they had, what they had to do to get homes, big times. Yeah, he's like, keep your homes alone.
I, I, yes, I, I, I hear you, yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't think it, it, it wouldn't change or force us to change agendas, however.
We need to stand up.
So, I just, I, I just wanted to put it out there, and just, not necessarily, just more of a feel for the district's general support, so I can move, move forward to at least develop a little bit more, so we present more better information for the, the council as we move forward. Just wanted to get an idea of what the thoughts were.
I was trying to think about, like, the running unit and the historic district commission needs only living up with this, so we don't really know when their next meeting might be, or whatever, we need to look like for it, to be forward with this, like.
It's, it would essentially, it would essentially need an affirmation, so I don't know that it's a major prep, and that's where I'm, I'm sort of back to historic, how this is all available.
I would be interested very far up the program, and, you know, as long as it doesn't hit the industry inside, and like, we're gonna run it on them. I'm seeing what the details is.
I feel the same way, that, you know, getting more information, I would, I'd, I'd like to focus on what we're, you know, what about the town staff on the last, to, to make other work.
Yeah.
Back, over twenty years ago, we documented the blocks and lots on Portland Street and some of Main Street. We, the town commission report to document that, so we have the auditors, we have right now, times when someone came in, their words have changed, like, the method was said before. It's all studies that I can see that were funded by this, so that you had better documentation. And also with the people who documented the stadium techniques, that was done in probably 1997, so things like that, they get refreshing. What people got to see what's changed, see what, what's, what's worthy, seeing what might not have been.
Absolutely, I imagine that's ours, one thing that I did, so that, that'll be good, good start. Thank you.
John, is there any doubt?
No, I'm, I'm, I said, definitely more prediction information. I'm a firm believer in nothing is free, but I'd like to see behind the curtain, but most of the, I, it's not free money, it's, it's, there's match. Okay, I understand how it works, but they don't give away for nothing, so I'd just like to see, we have to go through, that's all, I'm not trusting.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm sorry, you have to rush.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman McDonald, John, I spoke about, yeah, I'm good, thank you. Jeff?
Nothing, thank you.
Jess?
I just wanted to give a letter of shout out, because they have some fantastic programming, the last day is cool, they got a kickoff summer reading program, and like, kids very much enjoyed it, and it was great timing, the spring of that new program started at 11:00 PM, and it's like, that's our, it's a new fashion this summer, so it's super jazz, and I was very happy to just wait in the summer festival, so I was happy to be there, um, sorry to have that happy, and I wish all of you would be happy to come forward, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, uh, the summer festival was, uh, smaller this year, uh, but, uh, kudos to the festival committee for, you know, getting reorganized, and, uh, it's a great step forward, and some little faces. These faces, I think, time to, to celebrate the last Saturday of new. Uh, I took the opportunity to attend the sudden main planning and development commission meeting, uh, Zoom, last Thursday, the twenty-third. Uh, in addition to the regular budget meeting that we have, uh, there were three speakers, uh, on L D two thousand and three, that was my primary interest between the end. I'd like to support as I can, just by, just showing up, sometimes, it's like, and I, like, princess. But, um, again, there was, there was a lot of comments on that, the, the, the presentations were good, there, there, there was a fellow, I don't know the name of his organization, but Jeff Levine was one of the speakers. And, uh, it seems as though he's been appointed to, I think the legislature has given it to one of the, can't think of the, bureau or department, uh, who's, who's running this thing, but they've taken him on, I think he's kind of a staffer, so, they're, they're, they recognize the fact that effective date of July one, two thousand and twenty-three is quite enormous, particularly to some towns that work on a town meeting schedule, where they have to have a warrant together, pretty much by December, so they can get it, you know, this town meeting by March, so basically that puts an enormous crunch. Uh, again, the, I think the legislature sometimes fails to understand what these pass-throughs mean in, in terms of real business that has to be done, and I think there might be some relief, perhaps, uh, they, they can't commit to it, but they understand, uh, that even though two thousand and twenty-three sounds like a long kind of way, if you look at the annual budget, and annual and warrant items, it's, it's really not that long a time, so there might be some relief in terms of implementation, uh, there, there were, there, there is an opportunity to comment to Mr. Levine, Jeff Levine, in terms of any concerns or whatnot. I just, I just did a chat memo about the fact that we've been planning developments in this town, uh, since the nineteen eighties, and actually, just under looking here, in the survey of technical stock, it began to show a nice color graphic where all those homes are, and all the, uh, the, the places we've been on a lot, so, and it spoke to the fact that, you know, the custom vision's been there. On the face of the law, it looks like they're gonna be requiring us, or are requiring us to, you know, to densify unit, uh, what unit density increases in places that are argument redensified. Because, like, you take, uh, Agri Medic Space, that was densified, and it was broken some vision, and it was set aside to save the thirty-eight acres from all, and, uh, it's overall sixty-two acres for open land. Uh, so, uh, there were people who spoke to those kind of things, and, uh, so, more to come on that, but, uh, it, it's something that's, that's real, and it's gonna affect every town that's in the way. So, that's all. Patty Ford, for Mr. Chair, who are we, Jeff? Old Bill?